Hey.
I'm Ellen.
There are moments where we talk about this.
I'll just move the laptop to the side.
I call this meeting of the Albemarle County School Board back to order. Do we have a closed meeting certification?
We do. I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
I second. Moved by Mr. Alcaro, seconded by Dr. Acuff. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Dr. Berlin is absent. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page is absent. Ms. Carlson is absent. Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you very much. We have one motion out of the closed session. I move that the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, agree to convey its undivided interest in all property of the Vocational Technical Education Center, otherwise known as KTEC, to the School Board of the City of Charlottesville, Virginia, for the sum of $5,300,000 in accordance with the agreement between these parties dated October 1, 1969. I further move that Chair Katrina Carlson, on behalf of the School Board of Albemarle County, Virginia, shall be authorized to execute all legal documents for this transaction.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mr. Alcaro. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Berlin is absent. Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page is absent. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson is absent. Chair Lee?
Yes.
So moved.
Wonderful, thank you. We are going to have a roll call, but I'm going to go a little bit out of order today because today we have our new student rep, Opal Kendall, who is a rising senior at Western Albemarle High School, and we also have student rep Waning Ding, who graduated from AHS this year, is also here. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. When we come around, Opal, you can talk a little bit about yourself, but we're going to start over with Ross Holden.
Ross Holden, School Board Attorney.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent for School Community Engagement.
Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Jono Alcaro, at large.
Judy Lee, Rivanna District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Opal Kendall, I'm a senior at Western Albemarle High School. I applied for this position because I'm particularly interested in politics, and I've worked pretty closely with members of the board through our school newspaper. So because of that, I think I have a unique appreciation for the importance of local politics.
Waning Ding, Student Representative.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Chandra Hayes, Assistant Superintendent of Instruction.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Great, thank you very much. Now we'll stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where's the flag?
It's in there.
Oh, dear.
The United States of America, the United Republic, the which of saints, one nation, under God, in the principle, with the continuum of justice.
And now we will observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a board member who would like to make a motion?
I move we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, seconded by Dr. Acuff. We can do this by a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yea. Any opposed? Nope. Motion carries. And then next, we have approval of the consent agenda. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion?
I move we approve.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Ms. Lee, if it's your pleasure, may I pull Policy GD around political activities? We, when we posted it for the public, we did have some feedback from staff, from staff out at the schools. So we wanted to, and Ms. Lee did share the feedback with me, and so that's really part of the process, that we got some good feedbacks. We'd like to pull it, work on it, and then bring it back again for information. So if you wouldn't mind, can we pull that before you approve the consent agenda?
Sure. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda, save for Policy GD and for information policy review in revision 4.5.
I'll so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Okay. We can take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. That's all of us. Motion carries. Okay. Next, we have our announcements. We have our spotlight on education. Ms. Kendall, will you read that?
Thank you, Ms. Lee. This past May, something happened to one of our students that has not occurred in our district for more than a generation, or perhaps longer than that. This student, a sophomore no less, earned an award at the Regeneron International Science Fair held in Dallas this year. More than 1,800 student finalists from 75 countries compete each year for international recognition, showcasing their ingenuity, their research skills, and their ability to serve millions of people from around the world. Our student, Vidya Mbati, placed second in the translational medical science category for her research into the treatment of a disease that affects millions of people around the world. For Vidya, the work was also deeply personal. Among those with her targeted disease, rheumatoid arthritis, was her grandmother. There is no known cure for this painful and debilitating illness, until now, perhaps. Mentored by a UVA scientist, Vidya developed a computer program that enabled her to screen countless drugs in the FDA's approved database, searching for any drug that had the potential to combat rheumatoid arthritis. She eventually discovered one, a drug that is approved as a treatment for mental illness. She ran scenarios that indicated that this drug could interact with the immune system to block inflammation, suggesting a possible treatment. Since then, UVA has obtained two patents, listing Vidya as an inventor and is planning to conduct clinical trials. It is possible this could lead to an approved treatment within a few years. Vidya's journey to the honor she earned in Dallas began right here at home. She was a grand prize winner in the Piedmont Regional Science Fair in March, automatically qualifying her for international competition. A month later, although not required to participate in the statewide science fair, Vidya won the Lee Dos Virginia STEM Young Researcher Award at the Virginia Science Fair. Vidya is with her family out of town, but is with us this evening via Zoom. I'd like to welcome her to our meeting and ask her to talk about what her interests are in this project, her findings, her experience in Dallas, and some thoughts about what's next for her.
Thank you very much. It's great to meet you all. So I studied rheumatoid arthritis, which is an inflammatory joint disease that affects tens of millions of people around the world, and existing treatments have serious side effects, and importantly, there's actually no prevention for this disease. And the traditional drug development process is long, expensive, and unfortunately, most drugs fail. So I decided to mine health insurance databases to find an FDA-approved drug that could be repurposed for arthritis. And I made the surprising discovery that a drug called Haldol, which is used for mental disorders, dramatically reduced the risk of arthritis. And then I took these findings into the lab at UVA to find out how exactly Haldol protected against arthritis. And I found that Haldol blocked the inflammation that's important in arthritis, and I also discovered new protein that binds to Haldol. And these findings are really exciting because we could potentially prevent millions of people from arthritis. And the University of Virginia has filed two patents on this discovery, in which I'm an inventor. And yeah, I'm really excited to translate these findings. So my mentor and I are now working on designing a clinical trial. And I was very excited to represent Mesa and Albemarle High School at the International Science and Engineering Fair in Dallas, and it was great to win a grand award. And it was exhilarating to meet students from around the world and make new friends, and I enjoyed talking to and learning from many scientists there. And the experience overall rekindled my interest to continue doing science to help humanity.
Wow. Thank you so much. That's amazing, Vidya. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts for Vidya?
I just have a question. Does Haldol have the potential to also block inflammation with other autoimmune illnesses?
Yes, definitely. And we're going to be working on testing Haldol with other inflammatory diseases to see its result and hopefully design clinical trials for it with other diseases as well.
Outstanding. Great work.
Thank you.
Congratulations, many times over. My question is, was, what gave you the interest in rheumatoid arthritis? Was it something in your personal life?
Yeah, absolutely. So my grandmother actually has rheumatoid arthritis, and so when I saw how much pain and how debilitating the disease was for her, I really wanted to learn more about this disease, and I was really shocked to see that there are actually no, no actually FDA-approved therapy for this disease. And so I wanted to find a prevention for this disease because there's no FDA-approved prevention.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of questions. How did you go about finding the protein that bound to Haldol? What did you do?
So I worked in a lab at UVA with my mentor, Dr. Werner, and I basically wrote code to perform many statistical analysis in health insurance databases, and I made the surprising discovery that this drug could be repurposed to treat this disease.
Okay, I think in my, I was imagining like Petri dishes and things. So thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I also kind of validated these results in the lab also with mass spectrometry and other cell culture experiments to actually find out that this drug was preventing the inflammation in this disease.
Wow. And then how did you get access to the health insurance databases?
Yeah, so I basically got access through the lab at UVA, which I worked in, with my mentor, who's an orthopedic surgeon.
Wonderful. Again, congratulations. This is really wonderful work.
Can I ask how you found your mentor?
Yeah, so basically, I wanted to find someone who's really experienced in this field, and so I found him because he's an orthopedic surgeon, and luckily, he was really excited to help me and include me in his lab.
Yeah, really very impressive work. Thank you so much.
Bravo. Just one more question. When you were looking at the health insurance or Medicare data, did you see a lower incidence of autoimmune illnesses for those patients that took Haldol routinely?
Yeah, I basically found that it had a protective effect in people and about a bit of a 30% risk reduction in arthritis, and so that's what led me to this finding.
Outstanding.
Amazing.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for being with us here tonight and telling us about your achievement.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Thank you. That was very, very impressive. Next, we have, do we have any other announcements?
No.
Next, we have public comment. We have one in-person speaker. Kate will be doing that. Thank you.
Right, we have one. I'll read the comment guidelines, but we have one speaker, Rachel Trish, who is here from my district, from the Jack Jewett District. "We invite and actively seek the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance and provide time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance will not be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting may be ejected by the chair. We don't expect that that will happen. Individuals and organizations wishing to speak during public comment must sign in with the clerk, Ms. Thompson. Sign up is available online beginning 9:00 a.m. on the Monday of the meeting week until 3:30 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speakers should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address or voting district. Address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. Give written statements and any other supporting material to the clerk. If you are unable to complete the presentation in the time, excuse me, allotted, a copy of supporting materials will be provided to the school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discontinue their comments after three minutes. A color-coded light system is used to time the presentations. A yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into the presentation, and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests that no clapping, booing, or any other audible form of support or non-support be used. If members of the public wish to show their support for a speaker, they may stand or raise their hands. When multiple comments on the same topic have been presented, the chair may request additional comments on the topic be limited to those who have new information. Debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed, and use of the projection system is reserved for staff-scheduled agenda item presentations only. With that, lengthy preamble, Ms. Trish, you are welcome to come up to the podium, and you can adjust the microphone to fit you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rachel Trish. I am the mother of a rising fourth grader and kindergartner in the Jack Jewett District. I am here to speak to you tonight about stacked bus routes. In general, stacked routes seem like a great idea. A single bus can pick up two routes of kids, a great solution when we're facing a driver shortage. Everyone I have talked to about stacked routes assumes that the kids who are picked up first in the morning are dropped off first in the afternoon. That makes sense, and that is not the case. For the last two years, my son has ridden on a stacked route. His bus has picked him up earlier than it did in kindergarten and first grade and dropped him off at home later in the afternoon. Every day of school, he has begged me to be driven to school or to be picked up as a car rider, so he didn't have to sit in the cafeteria for extra time before and after school. Your most recent update from transportation said that stacked bus routes would be used next year, and children would be dropped off at school no more than 15 minutes before the start of the day and picked up no more than 15 minutes after dismissal. Transportation did not tell you that the same children would be waiting for both of those times. Transportation is telling my child and approximately half of the children who ride stacked routes to extend their school day by 30 extra minutes every day. Some children already struggle with the length of the school day. For those children, adding another 30 minutes when they are expected to be seated and calm is impossible. I would like to know, where did the 15-minute requirement come from? If a shorter and faster route is scheduled adjacent to the school day to meet this requirement, can the requirement be changed? Having one group of kids wait 15 minutes and a second group of kids wait 20 minutes seems more equitable than having one group wait 30 minutes and the second group wait none. My daughter is starting kindergarten this fall and is so excited to ride the bus to school with her big brother. I want this to be a good experience for her, and I'm concerned it won't be, because it is not fair, it is not equitable, and it's not right to ask the same children to wait both in the morning and the afternoon. I thank you for your attention to my comments tonight and for your continued dedication to transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Trish.
Thanks very much for your comments, Ms. Trish. Next, we have school board or superintendent business. Does anybody on the school board have anything they'd like to discuss?
I do. I do. Earlier today, Kate and I had the opportunity to attend the annual VSBA, Virginia School Board Association Conference on Education in Richmond, and our school division was very well represented. Two of our lead coaches, Katina Dudley and Megan Maynard, were part of the program presenting on our division's career learning communities. You know, when I looked at the offerings for the workshops, I thought, oh, that's cool, let me go to that, and I saw it was our people, I thought. Administrators and school board members from across the Commonwealth had the opportunity to hear from Katina and Megan about how this program was conceived, developed, improved, and is now being rolled out. Attendance from other school board members and administrators from throughout Virginia was very strong at the sessions Katina and Megan held, and I'm told our program brochure nearly sold out. There are about 150 high school students enrolled in these fields of study, which are closely aligned with career paths. My thanks to both Katina and Megan for their leadership. Also, at today's conference, one of our students, Alice Thompson, who attends Monticello, received one of two awards in the VSBA's annual student essay competition. Alice wrote movingly and eloquently about a very prominent and relevant issue in our discourse today, the importance of civility. And she read this for us today at the luncheon. Here's an excerpt. "When we look at our generation, it's sometimes hard to find the inspiration to do good, even though we have the tools right in front of our faces. Children are taught that kindness is like a pebble in a pond. Person A gives a flower to person B, who in turn helps person C with their math homework, who in turn is inspired to start a tutoring business. Children are taught that civility is like a ripple in the water, growing and growing and never stopping. They're taught to throw the pebble. So why don't we continue to do so? It's my belief that everything you say and do is in your own hands. There are plenty of pebbles on the shoreline, but not many make it into the water. There are so many words we could say, but instead, we walk past, letting them crunch under our feet. Civility is picking up the pebbles on the ground or the thoughts in your head and throwing them out into the world, always with kindness and understanding, as Alice would say." So Kate and I enjoyed meeting Alice and her dad and grandfather at the luncheon today, and we appreciated the presentations, and we offer congratulations to Katina, Megan, and Alice for their contributions on the statewide level today.
Thanks, hon. Is there, do you have any business? Dr. Austin, do you have business?
I do have just one item of business. So as the board is aware, we have a policy that, it's a policy about acting, my acting in the absence of policy. And so as a part of that policy, if I address a situation where we haven't outlined it in policy, it says that what I need to do at the next meeting, the next, as soon as possible, school board meeting is make you aware of it, and then also let you know that we're going to address it in our policy. I'm not going to go into depth here because it involves an individual student. I have had communications with board members to be more specific, but it wouldn't be appropriate to talk about an individual student in public. This involves waiving our out-of-district tuition for an international student who has no recourse other than to be in our schools and for just one more year. And so normally, the tuition would be rather exorbitant, given the fact that the student doesn't have years and years in our school system that, because we use a sliding scale where we lower the tuition. So what I wanted you to know is that this was not, this is not addressed in our policy, and so I decided to waive the child's tuition. I wanted you to be aware of that, and I do have Lauren McLean, Craig Domer, Patrick, and Ross are going to sit down and look at the policy and figure out how to revise it so that we can deal with these situations in the future. It doesn't require a vote, but I just needed to let you know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to school division business. First, we have a school naming review update from Karen Waters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Am I right here? Oh, okay. All right. Right there. Thank you. Great, thank you, Christine. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Karen Waters, Director of Community Education, and I'm here in my capacity as the superintendent's designee, as project manager for the school name reviews. Thank you for giving me the time to update you on our progress. Oh, let's get it down here.
Perfect. Thank you.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. So as you know, in 2018, the board directed the superintendent to review the names of all schools named for individuals to ensure alignment with our values, which are found in our strategic plan. In addition to ensuring alignment with equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness, we want to make sure that we maintain fidelity to our anti-racism policy as well. As you're aware, the Albemarle County School Board policy, ACC, states the Albemarle County School Board and the Albemarle County Schools reject all forms of racism as destructive to the division's mission, vision, values, and goals. And of course, this encompasses individual racism as well as institutional and systemic or structural racism. So I just include these as a little refresher for you all. So far, we've had So far, we've had five names of schools that have been renamed, the most recent being Ivy Elementary as of July 1st. Three names have been retained, and you see them all there. Recently, the Board approved revision to the school naming review policy, and these changes require staff to provide you with research on individuals for whom our schools are named, along with a recommendation on behalf of the superintendent to retain or to implement a review for your consideration. Should you determine that you'd like to initiate a name review, that school's name will be changed, and it will no longer be named for a person. So names of people will no longer be in consideration for that school. A new name will be identified via our usual community engagement process, which involves an advisory committee, surveys, public meetings, et cetera. At this point, there are five schools remaining that have not been reviewed. These include Baker Butler Elementary, Joseph T. Henley Middle School, Agner Hurt Elementary, Leslie H. Walton Middle, Stone Robinson Elementary, and Jackson P. Burley Middle. And these are given to you in the order in which they were built, with Baker Butler being the most recent. I'm going to share with you the research that I have discovered thus far, and then we'll talk a little bit about how we move forward. Some of the sources that I reviewed are included here. These include yearbooks, Board of Supervisors minutes, School Board minutes, film by Lorenzo Dickerson, and then the School Board commissioned research by Shelley Murphy, Jean Cooper, and April Burns back when the Kail review was done, and some background from those, that piece was reviewed as well. So Baker Butler Elementary is the first that we will discuss. Baker Butler was built in 2002. It was named by an advisory committee, which was impaneled by the superintendent at that time, and the school is named after John Baker, who is the first black elected member and chair of the School Board, and James Butler, who was an extension agent, one of the first to run an extension office in Virginia, and he was also the first black man elected to the Board of Supervisors. Both of these gentlemen were deeply involved in the community, and the review done by Murphy et al. indicated no quotes or articles that were problematic with reference to these two gentlemen. So the conclusion is that this name is consistent with our values of equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness, and is recommended for retention. Incidentally, both of these gentlemen, at separate times, had the General Assembly pass resolutions recognizing them for their achievements. The next school, Joseph T. Henley Middle School, was opened on September 6th, and while several sources that I reviewed indicated that it was named for County Supervisor Joseph T. Henley Jr., it was actually named after his father, Joseph Senior, who chaired the School Board from 1945 through 1960. So consequently, I included a little blurb about each of these gentlemen. Joseph Senior was a farmer, and he started Henley's Orchard out near Crozeback in 1932. During his service on the School Board, he was a constant presence on the committee that was responsible for creating Burley Middle School, and he maintained commitment to Burley during his entire tenure, which helped to ensure continuous, although segregated, education for non-white county students. Under his leadership, pay was considered, was continued for Ms. Virginia Murray after she was diagnosed with a brain tumor, and after she passed away under his leadership, a resolution was made by the School Board in her honor. In 1951, he unsuccessfully challenged Senator E.O. McHugh, who was a documented segregationist, and he fought to restrict the construction of public housing for his seat in a primary. However, he was not successful in that attempt. Mr. Henley was killed while he was in office as the supervisor of the, as the chair of the School Board in a farming accident, and at that point, the chairmanship of the Board passed on to E.J. Ogilvy. At that time, there was a market shift in the tone and tenor of the School Board minutes, and within three years, the Board of Supervisors fired the entire School Board because they refused, they created a resolution not long after Mr. Henley's death, about a year later, to, in 1962, they created a resolution saying that they would cancel all athletics and activities should the schools be forced to integrate. The Board of Supervisors asked them to rescind that resolution, and they refused, and so subsequently were all fired. Joseph Junior, he served on the Board of Supervisors for 16 years. He continued the family business. He was named Farmer of the Year, had a very long marriage of 60 years and four children, and a review that was commissioned by the Board, by Murphy et al., showed nothing untoward reported in the press regarding either of these gentlemen. And so the conclusion is that the name is consistent with our values of equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness, and it is recommended that we retain this name for this school. Leslie Hughes Walton Middle School was opened in 1974, and it was named after Leslie Hughes Walton, who was the School Board chair at the time. He died of a heart attack one year into his term. Prior to that, he served as the clerk of the court, clerk of the Board, as well as assistant superintendent. Many sources incorrectly identify his father, the Reverend Leslie Harvey Walton, who's known round these parts for bringing the Boy Scouts, as the namesake, but it was indeed Leslie Hughes Walton. He was born in Fork Union. As I said, his father was Reverend, and he was the minister of the Baptist Church in Scottsville. Leslie Walton married Lady Boggs. He was known as a lifelong Democrat, and he ran for statewide office in 1967. He began his career teaching at Greenwood and was the principal of Scottsville High School. He became assistant superintendent in 1947, worked very closely with his best friend, Paul Kail. On Kail's retirement in 1969, Leslie Walton became superintendent, and according to the Daily Progress, quote, "Those who knew them and observed them working together were continually struck by their single blindness of purpose." Consequently, I'd like to take a little deeper dive into Mr. Walton and report back additional research for you so that you can make a determination as to whether or not this name should be reviewed. Agner Hurt Elementary is the next school I'll talk about. It was opened in 1992, named in honor of the former county executive Guy Agner Jr. and the Albomoral educator and principal Benjamin Franklin Hurt. In addition to Agner Hurt, the drive that leads down into Albomoral High School is also named for Mr. Hurt. I'll talk a bit about Mr. Agner and then share about Mr. Hurt. Guy Agner was the county executive from 1976 through 1990. He hails from Lexington, Virginia, went to VMI where he was in charge of the yearbook. He worked briefly in his family's oil business after joining the Army, taught for VMI for a while, worked as, in public works for the city of Charlottesville as the city manager for Lexington, Virginia, and he came to Albomoral County to serve as the county executive in 1976. He is credited for having an active role in establishing K-Tech and received the Paul Goodlow McIntyre Award from the Chamber of Commerce for his community leadership. A review, the review done by Murphy and colleagues, indicated nothing problematic with respect to Mr. Hurt, and the pictures you see are him while he was at VMI and then him later in life as a county exec. Benjamin Franklin Hurt was the principal of Albomoral High School. He lived 100 years, I think very close to his 100th birthday, and he served as a principal of Albomoral from 1954 to 1984, and he was elected to the Hall of Fame by the Virginia High School League, and prior to that, he served as a teacher, coach, and principal at Greenwood High School. His degree is in Latin, and he got that from Hampton Sydney, and a master's from UVA. He served in World War II. He was a member of Croze Baptist Church, and he was also a member of the Croze Lions Club for 70 years. It's known and recognized that nationally, minstrel shows are a pretty well-documented form of entertainment and fundraising utilized by Lions Clubs. And during his tenure at AHS, the Booster Club did an annual fundraising minstrel show, and these are pictured in the school's yearbook, along with other images that may be perceived as troublesome by current standards. Upon his death, however, Mr. Hurt was widely beloved, highly lauded and allotted and honored by many. He was known for knowing each and every one of his students. I want to share some of the images that I uncovered in some Albomoral County yearbooks. These are pages from the pier under his leadership. On the left side, you see one of the annual minstrel shows. The one on the right side is a different year, different minstrel show, where Jean Corrigan from UVA is being introduced by a gentleman in blackface. This, these are pages from the 1968 pier. 1968 was the year in which students from Burley were first admitted to Albomoral High School. The photograph on the left, where the young woman is holding the bug at the top of the page, that is on page three. It faces the page where they're welcoming students from Burley to Albomoral High School. Later on in the yearbook, you see the young man at the swastika, same year, 1968, and this is another photograph, one page 171, 1968. So consequently, I would like to take a deeper dive into Mr. Hurt and provide you all with more information so you can make a determination as to whether or not you'd like to retain or request a review of that school. Last couple of schools are Stone Robinson Elementary and Burley Middle School. Stone Robinson was created in 1961, when two smaller schools, the Overton School and the Sismont School, these were small one-room schools for lower grades of white children, were consolidated. Committee of Citizens met and agreed that the school should be named for both Mary Stone and Reverend Leslie Robinson, and the school remained segregated until 1966. Mrs. Stone was the matriarch of the Stone family, which lived at Morven, and that is the property on which the Overton School was located. She was very, very active in the garden club and in civic affairs, and she frequently shared the grounds with the local schoolchildren. Later on, I heard anecdotes about how she served the community, I think in a volunteer capacity, as a librarian. Reverend Robinson was the rector at Grace Church in Keswick. He took a great interest in the Sismont School and visited regularly, but neither of these individuals were particularly engaged in schools writ large, other than the little schools that they visited and then continued to support Stone Robinson. Murphy's review indicated nothing untoward with respect to these individuals, and so the conclusion is that this name should be retained. Jackson Burley Middle School was opened as a joint city-county high school in 1951, designed to have a place to, for black students, so that in an attempt to have a separate but equal, brand-new shiny high school to sort of avoid segregate, integration. The school was named for a prominent African-American businessman, and it was operated jointly by the city and county. This property was condemned and then purchased by the city over the objection of his widow to build the school. It was the last piece of property that they needed. She did not want to sell, but they were able to claim it from her, and so subsequently, they named it for him as a nice gesture. It was renamed Jackson P. Burley Middle School again, when it was required by Albomoral County as a middle school in 1974. Mr. Burley was a native of Albomoral County. He was born in 1863, studied at Hampton Institute, had a long career as a teacher. He taught agriculture at the Albomoral Training School, which was another school, segregated school for blacks, and he was there for 19 years before he retired. The committee decided it was most fitting to name the high school for him, and I think they were also making a nice gesture to his family, since the land where Burley stands had belonged to them. This name is consistent with our values of equity, excellence, family and community, and wellness, and is recommended for retention. So in conclusion, the recommendation that I'd like to make on behalf of the superintendent is to retain the names of Baker Butler Elementary, Stone Robinson Elementary, Jackson P. Burley Middle School, Joseph T. Henley Middle School, and do some additional research on Agner Hurt Elementary and Leslie H. Walton Middle. And at that point, we will ask you to make a determination as to whether or not you'd like to have a review. Any questions?
I like the new process better where you've done some background research before we get into it. Just, just a comment, as you may or may not know, my bias is not for naming for people because even if they have very stellar records, they don't have the salience of a different type of name, but I would, you know, I would go forward with this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Akav. Anyone else?
Ms. Waters, would it be possible for us to request from you some of the information that you dug into?
Absolutely. I've compiled it all.
I think that'd be great to review.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to sum it up, first of all, I just really want to thank you, Karen, because I know several times over even just this last week when I was leaving the office, you were just getting started in the, in the conference room, and I know this is challenging work. I mean, so to sum it up then, on our next Board meeting on the consent agenda, this, essentially what's on this slide will be on the consent agenda, so that, well, we are just, I'm just saying back what we heard, which is that when the Board, if they, if they vote to approve the consent agenda next time, what they're saying is that Baker Butler, Stone Robb, Jackson Burley, and Joseph Henley are now, they are now off the table. They are, they're moving forward, and then we're just down to the two schools, and those schools, you'll do, you'll dig deeper, do more research. You will come back to the Board with a recommendation that I will make to the Board as to whether or not we are going to go into the process of renaming those schools. That'll be the next step for those two, if that needs to occur. So.
Exactly. I'd like to have a little bit more primary source documentation before we ask you to make any decisions in terms of reviewing, since we know once we do a review, the name is going away.
Karen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just had, I wanted to echo what Dr. Akav said about a preference. I have a bias against naming for a person just because I, it just feels like, you know, if the kids, I want our names to be forward-looking. I also am not really sure how we got in, you know, how everybody got in the business of naming things after a person, but we're certainly not the first, and maybe we'll be the last.
Interestingly enough, Ms. Lee, as I was going through School Board Minutes, what I discovered was often the... I discovered was often, back in, back, sort of in the 50s and 60s, when they were building schools, someone died. They'd just go, oh, let's just name it after that person. I mean, literally, you know, schools were being built, and, you know, Mr. Henley died. Well, let's just name the next one after him. And it just really was sort of a convention of the day.
Certainly. And one other comment, I'll be interested to see the information that you'll be sending, but I noticed that, you know, it says, you talked a lot about researchers not finding anything problematic, but then also that they were consistent with our values. And I wondered if it was more the lack of anything negative, or also was it the presence of something positive that aligned with our values as well? So I think that, if you could make that more clear when you send that, I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely. I wanted to be as brief as I could.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll just, I'll reiterate what I said a minute ago, too. I mean, it seems to me, even if you name someone after an exemplary individual, it shouldn't necessarily be in perpetuity. I mean, some of our schools are, you know, our core schools are 60 years old, and whatever the exemplary people meant to the population in 1950, you know, is not as salient now. And if you have to have several paragraphs to explain why the school was named after this person, then it seems to me, thank you very much for having your name on the school for the last 50 years, but maybe we should just be forward-looking and adopt, you know, a value or a place name or something that is unambiguously timely whenever it is applied.
One of the nice details that is included in the policy, the revised, is that each school's name should be reviewed every 30 years.
We put that in in the first draft.
We'll be around 30 years. See you in 30. Three more decades.
The key is like, I think with that, Karen, I mean, when we put that in there, we were thinking, okay, so how do you like have that expiration date? So that, I mean, and what you said, Dr. Akav, makes complete sense to me. It's like, okay, thank you for lending us your name for this many years. And then it's really, like you said, it's about the future for the students. Also, when you come back to the board, I want to keep that anti-racism policy front and center, because some of the areas where we run into issues is around stuff that, in this day and age, would be considered, you know, in violation of that policy.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time and attention and for all the work that you do to support us.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, we have our Fall 2023 Redistricting Study Proposed Scope. Ms. Schmidt? We do the break in the, we do the 2:20s and then the break.
Oh, I got the old, I have the old copies.
Good evening. I'm Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. And tonight, I will be presenting a proposed scope for a redistricting study of the northern feeder pattern for your consideration. Just a couple of housekeeping notes. This item is for information only tonight and will be for action on the board's consent agenda at your next meeting on August 10th. The board does have a policy on redistricting advisory committees. It's linked here at School Board Policy FB, and this proposal does align with the guidance in that policy. Lastly, there is an enclosure in the agenda item. It's a multi-page PDF that has much more detail. This presentation is just the highlights. So as background, we have a new school planned in response to overcrowding at Baker Butler Elementary and planned development along the 29 North corridor. Unfortunately, due to the timing of available funding, that school will not open for another six years. Baker Butler needs more immediate relief, so we recommend evaluating if we can do anything prior to the new school opening. There are also two additional issues we would like to study, that we have some modest overcrowding at Woodbrook Elementary and under enrollment at Stony Point Elementary. Here are the proposed objectives of the study. The primary objective of the study is to recommend a two-phased approach to creating new boundaries in the northern feeder pattern. The study should produce a recommendation that will address current and projected enrollment issues and a preliminary recommendation for a boundary for the new elementary school. So on the right are the more specific objectives. So Phase 1 would be this study, and so the objectives would be to decrease the enrollment at Baker Butler and Woodbrook and increase the enrollment at Stony Point and increase or decrease enrollments at other schools to make that happen. We anticipate potential impact of some middle school boundaries, so they're included in the study as well. We would recommend that out of Phase 1, we would have a location of the new elementary school. We have some preliminary thoughts on that, but I think boundaries will inform the ultimate location of that. And then ultimately, we want to know what the preliminary boundary of that new school is, so that we're not moving families twice, ideally. And then Phase 2 would be to finalize that boundary and then open a new school. So here are the proposed guiding principles that the committee should use in developing and analyzing scenarios. These are very similar to past studies. It's based on feedback from past committees that they get in there with these options, and they need some guidance of what's a good option, what's it not. So we've drafted these guiding principles for your consideration. It has to do around timeline, the boundaries being contiguous, making sure if a kid can walk to school, let's keep them at that school, et cetera. So again, this is on the slide, but also in the document for your consideration. Here is the proposed committee composition. It will be one of our largest committees, but I think necessarily, due to the complexity of the study, we are proposing two individuals from each potentially affected school and four from Baker Butler, since they will be most impacted. The two representatives at the bottom from the Equity and Diversity and Long Range Planners are required per policy. This is a general timeline for planning purposes only. So we'll advertise for the committee in August if the board approves, and then the bulk of the work will occur in the fall. That will include committee meetings, community meetings, surveys for feedback. And then after receiving the committee's recommendation, the superintendent will make a recommendation to the board, and we're estimating in the February timeframe. So if action is taken, new boundaries will go into effect in the '24-'25 school year. So that will be Phase 1. And then Phase 2, we want to revisit that draft boundary when we're closer to opening that new school. And then the new school boundary would go into effect when that school opens in the '29-'30 school year. So just again, next steps, August 10th, this little item will be on your consent agenda for action. And then at that time, if approved, the superintendent's office will begin to advertise for committee members, and then the committee will begin meeting in September. So with that, I'll open up for questions. I do have additional resources in the slide deck if you want to look at any of the data. But again, this is the high level.
Ms. Schmidt, this is a, you're right, it's a very, very large committee with 26 members. Do you anticipate it would, you would always have meetings of the whole, or would you break up? Or how would this logistics seem to challenge you?
Yep. So first of all, I think 26 will be the max, because there's potential where a representative could serve both the middle school and the elementary rep. So 26 is the max. I do think there could be some opportunities from some subcommittees that come back. I think we're going to get going, let's see how it goes, and be flexible. All meetings will be open to the public. I do want to emphasize that with minutes being posted afterwards.
I just have to say, I hope you get a lot of applicants, because I know it's often a thankless job to be on a redistricting committee. And so I encourage the community to step forward, because we need you and appreciate your recommendations.
Ms. Schmidt, just one quick question, and that is, why in Phase 1 objectives is there no increase in Broaddus Wood listed? Because it seems to me, maybe I'm off, but they've got some room there.
Yep. So the adjacent schools to Baker Butler, I don't have a map, are Broaddus Wood and Hollymead and Stony Point. All have available capacity and certainly will be likely contenders for taking students from Baker Butler. It's not an objective, because right now, yes, it has capacity, but their enrollment is not creating any issues. Stony Point is much smaller. That's creating issues as far as the billing to staff, full level, grade levels, et cetera. So it's not an objective, it's a possibility that you increase the Broaddus Wood, but we don't want to say you have to increase the capacity of Broaddus Wood, because I think that would limit your options. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Is, in the guiding principles, is school makeup, is school population at any part of it? Did I miss that?
About halfway, I think what you're saying is demographics.
Oh, demographics, yeah, sorry.
So we seek to have a greater demographic balance among impacted schools where feasible. So yes, that will be a data point that the committee studies.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the other question that I have is about, this seems like a very big and comprehensive study, and then I wonder what conversations are had around AHS and redistricting at the high school level.
So you're correct, this is pretty comprehensive, but it is only, in this version, elementary and middle school. I want to point, I do, one of the reference slides is around high school, is all schools, right? Let me get to it. It's a little small. But this is our overall chart where we compare capacity versus enrollment. And so just to orient you, on the far left is our building capacity of each building. This does not include mobile units or trailers, that's just the building capacity. The middle section is our projected enrollment over the next 10 years, and then the far right compares it. So if you see red numbers, that means that we're projecting or currently having enrollment challenges. So Baker Butler, lots of red, right? They are well over capacity. So at the bottom, you'll see the high schools. Albemarle, yes, is our current issue right now, lots of red. It was studied back in 2016 to move students from Albemarle to Monticello. If the board wants to revisit or discuss that again, I would just point out that Monticello does not have as much capacity as they did at that time. They do have mobile units, right? So those capacity does not include the trailers. The far right, I added trailers or mobile classrooms, so Monticello has eight. So if you want to consider that as capacity of Monticello, we could bring some options, but.
I would definitely like that information. And especially, I'm not, I can't do the math quickly about what the 16 and the eight and the eight trailers look like, so what that looks like in the capacity.
So I think what we can do is bring a little history and recap of what was studied previously, what the capacity would be if you included the mobile units, and then options of how this would or would not work well with this other study. Does it make it too complex? Does it work as a subcommittee in parallel? Do you even want to do it at all? I just think we can bring some more data to have that conversation.
I'm sure you'll have it for the redistricting committee, but I would love, and I know you already have the data, but a comparison of the two potential school sites that will come on board within the next six years. I mean, one is at North Point, and one is at Brook Hill. Thank you, thank you. I need more coffee.
Yeah, just for the public's awareness, the school board has two proffered sites, one in North Point, which is north of Prophet Road on 29, and then one in Brook Hill, just north of Polo Grounds Road. I think as we do some preliminary boundaries of what the new school looks like and which boundaries are able to phase, I think that'll inform which site. But those are the two options under consideration.
I guess the question I have also is, when we did the massive expansion of Woodbrook, it was said to be a 10-year plan, and we're already talking trailers and overcrowding there, and it's only been, what, five, six years? So, you know, whichever school site we choose, I hope it has the larger capacity of the two, because our growth is unpredictable but steady and, well.
Yep, that will be a consideration, yes.
By the way, just a comment, that screening you had up before that table, that has been, to me, the most invaluable table every single year for the time I've been on the board. And, I mean, it just continues to point out our needs.
And I thank you for, I want to make one quick comment. I mentioned, that table is from the fall, and so we will update that before this study goes. I know people get frustrated with changing numbers, but that is a year old. We will update enrollment projections. But yes, it is a helpful tool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Thanks very much, Rosalyn. So we'll see that information back, I assume, in August?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we are about 15 minutes early, but we're going to go ahead and take our break. So we will be back here at 7:44. Do I gavel? Do I gavel?
So what experiences do CTE programs provide? CTE provides students of all ages with the academic and technical skills, knowledge, and training necessary to succeed in future careers. ACPS offers CTE programs in each of the national career clusters. CTE courses are interest-driven, hands-on, and project-based. They support students in being college and career-ready through leadership development, industry credentialing, and participation in work-based learning experiences. How do K-Tech and CLCs fit into CTE? In addition to being intentional about which courses we offer, we also consider how we group the courses to provide meaningful experiences to students. CTE courses are frequently paired with a Level One and Level Two course. These individual course sequences are also wrapped into both our K-Tech offerings and our career learning community model, so students who want to be a part of a small group of peers pursuing similar interests can learn and explore the pathway in depth together. All K-Tech programs have at least a two-course sequence, and all K-Tech classes are CTE classes. All of the career learning communities have elements of CTE infused through them, including pathway sequences, industry credentials, and work and community-based learning. How are pathways built into career learning communities? Our CLCs have been purposefully clustered around common themes and local partnerships. We make use of the assets of each school community to enhance the opportunities available to students throughout the division. For example, the Education and Human Development Career Learning Community taps into the New Boys and Girls Club on the Lambs Lane campus, as well as multiple local partnerships such as Region 10, UVA's Child Development Center, and AHS's renowned Peer Tutoring Center. How do CTE opportunities align across the student experience? At the beginning, you saw a video about why CTE is important for students. Students and families value these experiences, and so do we. ACPS students have multiple touchpoints with CTE programming over the course of their student experience. Career development starts in the preschool and elementary classrooms through career awareness via counseling lessons and guaranteed field trips. In middle schools, all ACPS students take a career investigation course in sixth grade in which they explore all of the various career clusters and reflect on their personal interest. Additionally, CTE exploratories in STEM, entrepreneurship, and media design are available to middle school students. Through advisory and seminars, students draft their personalized academic and career plans and curate artifacts for their portfolio. In high school, every student takes economics and personal finance, as well as two sequential electives from either CTE or fine arts as a graduation requirement. All Virginia graduates are also required to meet at least one college and career readiness indicator for graduation, which can include college coursework, industry credentials, or a work-based learning experience. CTE is a key element supporting our vision that our learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. We will now narrow our focus to High School Center Two. Charles Tilly with Quinn Evans Architects is with us this evening to elaborate on High School Center Two design principles and also the recent community engagement efforts.
Good evening. Thank you, Lindsay. I want to touch, as I begin tonight, to talk a little about the schematic design where we paused the project back in October of 2020 before the pandemic. Just give you a little bit of a brief overview of the presentation that we made at that point when we were talking about the schematic design and the work we had done to that point. You know, you have High School Center One, the career learning community around information and communication technology. And we're talking about the High School Center Two and what the possibilities are there as we're planning the project. This project extends all the way back into 2017 when the division did a study on the capacity of the high schools and how to address that, number one, but also how to engage the future of high school learning for students that makes it more connected to where they might go in life and to be career-ready. And so a lot of this background is coming out of that study. In that study, there were some guiding principles that were created that were the values that the division has about what types of spaces might want to be incorporated into our learning opportunities as you're developing projects across the division, as well as for the high school centers or other high school projects. And we put some pictures with these to kind of demonstrate the types of areas that are the architectural features, let's say, that these might represent. So a great learning is community-oriented and accessible to all. And that means the buildings and the facilities should be open and welcoming to communities that are inviting people in and not fortress-like buildings. Visible and transparent welcome areas that would welcome students as well as the greater community to be a part of the building. Great learning is interdisciplinary, and we talk a lot about that in terms of agile classrooms that can flex and change during the day as well as over time, but also providing breakout spaces that are easy to access, small and large, throughout the project. Great learning is mentored and authentic. And I think that's what the learning communities are all about, is giving students real opportunities to connect with careers, activities that look like the career as they're learning about it, but giving a variety of ways that students can connect with the things that they're learning and how that might apply in life. In our schematic programming study that we did, we created these educational priorities with the community groups and the staff as we were planning the initial schematic. Just to hit a couple of highlights here, under educational priorities, graduates that are thriving and life-ready.
Cooper Center, which provides each local school division with current and forecasted information regarding the most in-demand pathways. All courses we offer must meet the triple standards of high skill, high wage, and high demand. High skill means requiring training or education beyond high school. High wage means exceeding the average for all jobs regionally or statewide. And high demand means overall growth of job openings is above the state average. And how do KTEC and CLCs fit into CTE? In addition to being intentional about which courses we offer, we also consider how we group the courses to provide meaningful experiences to students. CTE courses are frequently paired with a Level 1 and Level 2 course. These individual course sequences are also wrapped into both our KTEC offerings and our career learning community model, so students who want to be a part of a small group of peers pursuing similar interests can learn and explore the pathway in depth together. All KTEC programs have at least a two-course sequence, and all KTEC classes are CTE classes. All of the career learning communities have elements of CTE infused through them, including pathway sequences, industry credentials, and work and community-based learning. How are pathways built into career learning communities? Our CLCs have been purposefully clustered around common themes and local partnerships. We make use of the assets of each school community to enhance the opportunities available to students throughout the division. For example, the Education and Human Development Career Learning Community taps into the New Boys and Girls Club on the Lambs Lane campus, as well as multiple local partnerships such as Region 10, UVA's Child Development Center, and AHS's renowned peer tutoring center. How do CTE opportunities align across the student experience? At the beginning, you saw a video about why CTE is important for students. Students and families value these experiences, and so do we. ACPS students have multiple touchpoints with CTE programming over the course of their student experience. Career development starts in the preschool and elementary classrooms through career awareness via counseling lessons and guaranteed field trips. In middle schools, all ACPS students take a career investigation course in 6th grade in which they explore all of the various career clusters and reflect on their personal interest. Additionally, CTE exploratories in STEM, entrepreneurship, and media design are available to middle school students. Through advisory and seminars, students draft their personalized academic and career plans and curate artifacts for their portfolio. In high school, every student takes economics and personal finance, as well as two sequential electives from either CTE or fine arts as a graduation requirement. All Virginia graduates are also required to meet at least one college and career readiness indicator for graduation, which can include college coursework, industry credentials, or a work-based learning experience. CTE is a key element supporting our vision that our learners are engaged in authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences, becoming lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. We will now narrow our focus to High School Center 2. Charles Tilly with Quinn Evans Architects is with us this evening to elaborate on High School Center 2 design principles and also the recent community engagement efforts.
Good evening. Thank you, Lindsay. Can anybody hear this? Okay. I want to touch, as I begin tonight, to talk a little about the schematic design where we paused the project back in October of 2020 before the pandemic. Just to give you a little bit of a brief overview of the presentation that we made at that point when we were talking about the schematic design and the work we had done to that point. You know, you have High School Center 1, the career learning community around information and communication technology, and we're talking about the High School Center 2 and what the possibilities are there as we're planning the project. This project extends all the way back into 2017 when the division did a study on the capacity of the high schools and how to address that, number one, but also how to engage the future of high school learning for students that makes it more connected to where they might go in life and to be career-ready. And so a lot of this background is coming out of that study. In that study, there were some guiding principles that were created that were the values that the division has about what types of spaces might want to be incorporated into our learning opportunities as you're developing projects across the division, as well as for the high school centers or other high school projects. And we put some pictures with these to kind of demonstrate the types of areas that are the architectural features, let's say, that these might represent. So a great learning is community-oriented and accessible to all. And that means the buildings and the facilities should be open and welcoming to communities that are inviting people in and not, you know, fortress-like buildings. Visible and transparent welcome areas that would welcome students as well as the greater community to be a part of the building. Great learning is interdisciplinary, and we talk a lot about that in terms of agile classrooms that can flex and change during the day as well as over time, but also providing breakout spaces that are easy to access, small and large, throughout the project. Great learning is mentored and authentic, and I think that's what the learning communities are all about, is giving students real opportunities to connect with careers, activities that look like the career as they're learning about it, but giving a variety of ways that students can connect with the things that they're learning and how that might apply in life. In our schematic programming study that we did, we created these educational priorities with the community groups and the staff as we were planning the initial schematic. Just to hit a couple of highlights here, under educational priorities, graduates that are thriving and life-ready, student work being more visible in the building and places that students can see each other working and, you know, talk about the things that they're learning. And then the community priorities around connecting to the local businesses and the activities that are going on there, as well as making the building more of a community resource. And a simple overview of High School Center as it's programmed right now, it's a new building. It's serving 400 students a day in about 60,000 square feet, and it will include flexible learning spaces that are adaptable and changeable over time so that as programs and opportunities come along, the building doesn't have to be completely redone to change and flex as it goes. In that original study, a program of spaces really breaks down into three parts. Instructional spaces, like project studios and learning studios, something we're calling the Innovation Core, which are the more specialty-type spaces that might be used for various programs and activities that are equipment-intensive or that kind of thing. And then the common resources that are the shared spaces that everybody has access to, and they're more of the generic-type spaces in a building. So the schematic plan where we left it last essentially lays out like this. At the bottom there is the main entrance to the building, and everything on the right-hand side of that arrow is a single-story, and everything on the left-hand side is a two-story space. The building essentially lays out where the community gathering space, right as you enter, with the admin space there on the right, support spaces across the top of the plan here, and then on the left side, the academic spaces are gathered around this common collaboration core that we're calling it. The learning studios and project studios are the light-blue spaces, and they are, you know, flexible furniture and lab-type spaces. The red spaces are the specialty studios that have a little more intensive equipment, and then that's surrounding these informal and formal, small-group spaces that are the green area there. And then the teacher collab zone is right in the middle of that space, the darker green The second floor is very similar, but the only difference is the pink areas there on the bottom of the plan are the more, like, we're calling it the Idea Lab and Digital Fab Lab are places where you might have a printer, a scanner, those more generic resources that aren't maybe shop tools or that kind of thing. And we attached a few spirit images to these just to kind of give you an idea, flavor of what we might be looking at, because we haven't designed anything. This is very early on. That center space could be a place for students to, you know, share social activities as well as more formal presentations and that type of thing, place all the community to come together. The project studios and learning studios look very similar to the spaces you have now that are highly flexible furniture with maybe some more equipment and pieces and parts that flex by whatever the program is in the space. The specialty studios, as I said, were a little more intensive equipment. Maybe there's a virtual reality system or some type of shop tools that are specifically needing their own space and something enclosed. And then the Idea Lab and the Digital Fab Lab provide more generic tools that go with a lot of different programs, allow students to make things and, you know, be a part of that creative content, so to speak. And we're always looking at opportunities to have outdoor spaces for students, whether they're small, informal, or, you know, large group gathering spaces, because we think that's a very valuable part of the learning experience. And so we've looked at different ways of incorporating those around the building, and that'll be, you know, important as we're developing the site plan and thinking about what the project looks like. So that's just a brief overview of where we left off, the schematic design. And for the last couple of months, we've been doing some more intentional community engagement, and we've met with middle school students, high school faculty and administrators, and the community business leaders, and we're in the process of uploading a family survey online that should go out here in a week or so, or next week. But we had a great group of middle school students that we met with, probably around 120 to 30 middle school students for some engagement. And at each school, we had a small group, and we gave them, if you remember the tiles that Lindsay showed that showed the different community learning pathways, we gave them three cards and said, pick your top, or we gave them all 12 cards and said, pick your top three. And so we got a lot of good feedback from the students, and they were mostly interested in design, engineering, business, and entrepreneurship, arts and communication, leadership, and law and government, and health, health sciences. So there was probably two-thirds of the students looking at interest in those areas, which I think is speaking to the types of facilities that you're talking about broadly for the division. We've also had really good feedback from community business leaders in a roundtable discussion that we had one morning here in the county. We asked a variety of questions of the small groups, and one of the biggest things we got out of the group was that there's a lot of interest in the business community about wanting to connect with students and the opportunities around internships and jobs and those types of things. We just need to make those things happen somehow, and I know that's going on now. That's a great, you know, thing to generate. One of the other questions we asked were what are the things that students need when they come out of school? And the top two things, and almost every table said this, was communication skills. Students need to be able to communicate their ideas verbally and written, and then communicate them in a forum or one-on-one. And then self-motivation and personal management, and we know that working remote, which is here to stay, is a big component of being able to personally manage your time. We also asked how could High School Center 2 best serve the community? And a lot of feedback about wanting to have after-hours access to the building, and I know schools routinely have after-hours access, but this may be more focused on the programs that are being offered or maybe some career counseling. Maybe there's some partnership opportunities there. There's a lot of possibilities. We had an engagement session with teachers and faculty of the high schools, and we shared some of the same presentation with that group, and we're looking for feedback of the things that we would change and maybe keep or take away. And the top three things there were, they like the collaborative workspaces and common areas, thinking about changing, or we haven't really designed this yet, but thinking about transparency in the building and how to have not everything be glass, but not everything be closed in space either. And then increasing the number of small-group spaces that are flexible that everybody can have access to. There's a lot of, they're not, the breakout spaces that are acoustically separate so that you can have a conversation without being in a larger group. Another things that spaces that teachers need, we asked the teachers, what do you really need to be successful here? And they wanted more spaces for student work to display and places for students to talk about their work, storage spaces, and then the professional development areas, which we are showing in the plan, we want to make those a little bit larger. But also, the teachers are very excited about the partnerships of local businesses and career mentors. I think that's a good thing to talk about. As I noted, we're working on a family survey right now that's, we have a video and a series of open-ended questions that are going to be issued out. This is for elementary school and middle school family, student, families for students, and so we'll look forward to get some good feedback there. So we've taken this information that we've gotten from these various stakeholder groups and have some programming considerations as we're working and moving forward here. There are some additional spaces that we're thinking about. At Albemarle High School, there's a great culinary arts lab that is very popular and very important for the community, so we're thinking about that as being a part of this. Adding a career center, which is more focused on providing a little bit of space for those community partnerships to, maybe there's an office and a couple of small meeting rooms that could be shared for a variety of things, but having a more intentional space for that. Making the teachers' professional learning communities a little bit larger, and then including the Albemarle County Data Center, which is a small data center for the division. These things are going to increase the program's square footage a little bit, but we're still kind of playing with the square footage of the building. The last note there is just to say that the learning labs and the studio spaces are very flexible spaces. There's not necessarily specifically designed with anything that we can't change with equipment, so you could do multiple things over time with a lot of the building that we've been talking about. So as you move forward, there will be some ways you can change the building without a lot of major effort. Another thing we're working on is a feasibility study for locating the center here on the campus of Lambs Lane. And just to give you some orientation, the big purple rectangle here is, I mean, purple triangle here is Albemarle High School. Hydraulic roads here on the right, Lambs Roads on the top side. And the orange block is the High School Center 2 footprint that we've schematically developed at this point. Obviously, that's going to change a little bit for this site, but we wanted to test-fit it here. The pink areas in the back are some proposed potential parking lot expansion areas that need to think about as we're possibly putting the building here on this location. Also, as a part of this study, we're working on the red border around that site there that you can see, the front side of the high school. The whole property, the 200 acres of Albemarle, of the Lambs Lane campus is zoned rule, and that has a certain height and setback requirement. And so what we're talking, we're planning about is adjusting that area zoning, this area in red, to allow us a little more flexibility to maximize the use of your site and the potential for this building to go in this location. So that's just a technical detail that we're trying to work through as part of the due diligence process of looking at this site. And moving forward, this is called rezoning, but it's, I don't think it's technically a rezoning of the site. It's a zoning of that particular part of the site. But we're working on that and working on our, finalizing our reprogramming efforts. Moving forward into design and construction in September, design and construction documents in September for about nine months or so. We will be looking to come back to the school board sometime in early November and in March to share with you the design progress as things kind of come together. And then hopefully, by this time next year, we'll be talking about bidding this project and getting construction projects started in the fall for the ultimate completion somewhere in the school year '26, '27. It's just around the corner. That's what we wanted to share with you tonight, and we're happy to have any questions or conversation.
Thanks very much. Any questions or comments?
Could you go back a couple of slides that shows the area that you're going to, we're going to rezone? Lindsay, and maybe you know as well, where is a, we are working with the county, as you know, for another road through there. Where is that on this? Where will that be?
So we're still finalizing three different options for the Loop Road.
Right.
I don't want to say we have a preferred option, but we're still working through that study. So it will be, where we put the school will definitely account for that future Loop Road.
It is great to see plans going forward. It's been a long time since we had the final report in December of 2017. Just a note for anyone who's listening, we as a school board adopted the center model not for all sorts of positive reasons, but also we didn't want to build one new gleaming, well, it sounds odd now, 21st century high school at $150 to $200 million and not do anything to the other schools. I love that we're doing this, but we still need to upgrade our other schools, and I know that your firm also had plans for the other school renovations, but that's my soapbox.
You've given us a lot of possibilities and a lot of the different options that could go into the building, depending on what's going to be there in terms of curriculum or various curricula. And Dr. Haas, maybe I'm going to ask you this question, is when do you anticipate those decisions to be finalized so that they can start to move forward with design? I'm not looking for a specific date.
I would say, based on our timelines, that we would be looking at this fall for sure. A big component of, and I do want to throw a shout-out to Dr. Kaiser, they, and John, it's funny because you could see you in one of the pictures. I don't know if you noticed yourself in there. So you participated in at least one of the community breakfasts, and Kate was at one. They took kind of a revolutionary approach to doing these community breakfasts and having different focus groups coming in. Initially, it was around community partners, and it got real specific the last time, was around businesses. And we felt that it was really, really important to get the business partners in particular to come in and give us feedback around the skills and possible programming for those sites. So I feel like we, the survey is going out soon around family, getting input from families around it as much as we can. So I feel like that's kind of the last piece to it, to designating what we would ideally see at the center. So I'm thinking this fall, like, not too long after school gets started.
Great.
Okay? Yeah.
Thank you.
I've definitely, when I saw this on this board agenda for tonight, I got really excited. I felt like we're getting, we're getting there, right? You know, to being able to land on this. And the other part that I really appreciate with Charles and Lindsay is that this notion that we, I remember many years ago, Dave Oberg had talked about having a dynamic facility because you couldn't predict, you know, 10 years out, 20 years out, what might be the things that we want our young adults to experience for, in career readiness. And so I, and the board really wrapped around that vision, so this idea of having dynamic spaces so that they can adapt over time, I'm really appreciative that y'all are figuring that out, too. And I'm excited to see what that looks like. But so this fall.
Good. Thank you.
I also very much like the idea of making it more permeable to the community. I mean, the Lambs Lane campus, as you know, has 24% of all students in Albemarle County. And as we're working to do more community outreach and get parental and community engagement, I think making sure we have that built into that as well, not only timing of the, you know, whatever resources, but spaces where that can happen. Because I think, I think we need, we're working very hard to, you know, promote our community engagement, but I think we need to think of this as sort of a showpiece for the county in terms of how we do that. I look forward to seeing the next round of drawings, too.
I'm really glad to hear that we're talking about community partnerships so early in the process. I remember when I was first running for office, I came to a meeting and we talked about, someone gave a presentation about internships, our internship programs, and largely they were, someone on the board asked who had these internships, and mostly it was kids who could have a family connection to the internship. So it was extremely inequitable. So I'm very glad, it was a concern that I had when I went through this presentation yesterday, so I'm very glad to hear that, and I hope it materializes in an equitable way for our students. Thank you.
I really appreciated, too, the addition of the career space to make it more permeable for... for our local businesses, and I don't necessarily mean, you know, local business being like UVA. I mean, the small businesses so that there is a, you know, a space for employers to come in and meet with kids and have time to mentor them and get them connected to their, to their, to their organization. So I thought that was, I didn't know where that came from. I didn't see it before, but I really appreciate whoever spoke up and decided to try to figure out how to include that.
So this, we're receiving this for information tonight, and then the rezoning application will be, is that going to be a consent agenda or something?
We intend to bring that to you on consent at the August 10 meeting, and then the next step for that will be a CAC meeting that'll be open to the public regarding the rezoning. And then the next action after that will be the schematic design to the board.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thanks, Charles.
So that concludes our school division business. Is there any other business that anyone would like to, that thumbs up as a no? Does anyone have any?
I just wanted to welcome Dr. Chandra Hayes, our new Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. Welcome. So I'm so glad to have you here, and I really look forward to getting to know you and working with you. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm happy to be here and excited to join the Albemarle County family. Everybody's been really welcoming, and I'm happy to be here.
And welcome again to Opal. Usually, we have a more, I guess, formal welcoming, so I apologize that I didn't give that, but please feel free to speak up as wedding. Also, I hope you feel free to speak up at any time if you have any questions or any comments, because obviously, we're here to serve you as our students. So thank you very much. And with that, I adjourn this meeting of the school board.